Alright, so are you ready? Alright, the meeting number one.
We're here!
The meeting number one.
We're here!
My name is Sandy Nurse. Thank you for being here in the family room. On behalf of the Nurse and Council, welcome to the first ever Climate Week at City Hall. For us, this is your house, to the firm, looking reverse to the state as a human host. So, I just wanna do a little housekeeping. The cupcakes will be there if you want cupcakes. I moved some beverages there. A little bit of this trickled in. We got a packed program. Lots of, uh, lots of great folks we're in honor today. Lots of performances, so really excited. And I'm beyond excited to see all your faces here today, especially as many of you are coming off of this storm March of 2021. Congratulations to you and those who are part of it. There were seventy-five thousand people this Sunday. It's amazing effort, quite amazing. And just congratulations. Sunday was really an opportunity to build momentum, to show the strength and unity and resolve of the climate justice movement. And while Climate Week is largely a corporate-like, it's not a project. It is a time when global leaders around the world are here. And so we do what we always do, tie that community, and turn up in the final terms. And I believe the message on Sunday was very clear that we need to mend all the fuels and that the lack of vision is still a problem. So, we call for this council today to celebrate the remarkable achievements from our organizations, grassroots coalitions, that have been instrumental in driving positive change throughout the years. Wanting to give a couple shout-outs to those here. We've got folks from Los Angeles, Vice and Works. I see a couple from LIA. And we've got Pauline, who's from New York. And I think she works for the first time. And Alvin, today. And Jason, who's from Detroit. And Asian workers. There's so many more to you, um, I'm gonna forget it. And I want to present all the fuels, who are brought up. I also wanted to give a shout-out to some of the artists who made the artwork for today. Uh, these climate books that were created by a committee by young people from the country can tell the lived stories and experiences of young people and communities that have been burdened by environmental justice in New York and relates to the structural challenges. And they also speak of resilience and the power of community. So thank you all, my favorite, for letting us do the work for today. And a special shout-out to Udon Malan and Andrew Boye of the Climate Club. This is a terrifying project. This is a project that melts art and science and technology from grassroots organizations to get the world to act in time. It has the end of this five-year, three-hundred-and-six days when you will hit point five degrees Celsius. So it's a serious clock. And last thing I want to say, look back on the people versus fossil fuels. Thank you so much. No matter what happens, all the beautiful graders that have formed the March of Sunday displayed here in Rosanna. Thank you so much. So, thank you everybody for being here. There could be so much power in this room right now. The people power represented in this room is without a doubt unstoppable. We represent a loud, strong collective spirit that recognizes the fight against climate change, is inseparable from the fight for justice, equality, and opportunity. Tonight is about honoring your, your hustle, your dedication, your commitment, and solidarity, not only to our planet, but most importantly to each other and millions of people that you will never know. And solidarity here is a key word because people and places are dying. The US alone experienced twenty-three separate billion-dollar weather climate disasters in the first eight months of 2003. The longest since we started rebuilding. Globally, the damages are extensive. Fires and floods increased, devastating floods in Pakistan, Libya, and India, wildfires in Canada, and the hard work of news that none of us single empire can make to survive a loss of environment like this year. The global south is making it the hardest and rightfully demanding that developments financially aid in the loss and damages that they are experiencing due to over a century of colonialism, extraction, exploitation of land and people, and completely unchallenged global capitalism. And there is so much work to do. And given what we're seeing statistically and indicators, it can seem like we're going down the same path. But we're here tonight to practice the rest of it from that overwhelming coal emissions. And we need to take time to have that all begun and all that we will endure. Tonight, the council will be honoring the work of four coalitions and the New York City institution. We recognize and lift up your work to create renewable energy standards, fight for energy democracy, ensure a just transition for workers, fight for green new jobs, secure investments in sustainable infrastructure, and charge a pathway to zero waste. It's important for the council to post this because local governments are on the front lines in climate change. We are responsible for managing and implementing and ensuring implementation of policies that help achieve what we call good. And we are in the fight. We are working to ensure our city's ambitious and necessary ambition production requirement in Global Order 7. We passed the Zero Waste Act, which includes mandatory universal curbside organic collection. We have a lot of energy for public transit for full and non-time availability of the street's master plan. We are holding the administration accountable to invest in flood protection and critical infrastructure. We are pushing for a hundred and fifty megawatts of solar power on city buildings and properties. And we have a major green construction to happen. We are pushing, and we're doing so much more. This council is in the fight. And working together on inspiration from the success of many in this room, we can take on the sights and we can win. So, I say, well, we do. We're going to host a lot of events celebrating Independence Days of countries. And so it was really important that we really put a stake in the ground and start commemorating the work that New York City's doing, the council's doing, the state's doing. Everyone is fighting like hell. We're all half the time worked out, underpaid, overstressed. But it's important that we recognize each other because we're doing the right damn job, doing our best we can with what we got. So, before I go, I'm gonna invite up to the podium someone who's fighting tooth and nail for workers, for unions, and for green union jobs. Representative District Ten, please help and welcome our senior chair of the labor committee, Carmen De La Rosa, to share our first harmony. Um, first of all, the things Sandy Nurse has brought to the super spot. Sandy, please answer that call because it's always on the right side of history and on the right side of justice and they come from the nurse. And I'm glad you're here. And councilmember, there are all the residents of Washington Heights, Cleveland, and Normalville, and Manhattan. And this Climate Week certainly like many of you did, especially close to home. Because I represent a group of individuals that struggle too and environmental justice community that feel the effects of climate change in very personal, personal and equitable ways every single day. Our release tonight, help us move closer to greener, greener, and more just and wiser. As the chairman of civil services and labor committee and strong supporter of all climate action who's leading all leadership in this moment, y'all, it is great, it is a great honor to introduce the first honorary, which is Climate Jobs New York. And are one of the main sectors of greenhouse gases and leading to global warming. But Climate Jobs New York is making great progress in correctness. Climate Jobs New York is a growing coalition of labor unions representing more than two-point-six working men and women at the center of our economy and among the most important stages in the nation's transition to sustainable low-carb economy. Climate Jobs New York advocates for green energy economy at a scale, and at a scale for climate science and math. Creates good union jobs and supports more equitable communities and more resilient New York. This coalition for the carbon-free health school initiative. That's an amazing initiative to make sure that they're producing the carbon credits in our public schools. And this coalition includes the building trades and the energy sector unions that are members working in the fossil fuel sector, operating and executing whole oil, gas, and nuclear plants that will be phased out as the transition to a green economy accelerates. Through training, workshops, education. And these workers across various labor unions are empowered to join a global movement towards a low-carb future and equitable economy. While addressing the climate crisis and energy remains a daunting task as we are in New York City, Climate Jobs New York continues to prove that it can be done. With a little bit of will and a lot of hard work, we can work together to have the New York City that we all deserve. It is my honor to present a proclamation with the city council of Climate Jobs New York on behalf of our speakers.
Some of the people in the back, that's okay actually. If you could stand, maybe like go in between those two where I'm pointing. Wait, no, then come, yeah, good. Can you, can you in the back, can you come forward? And then, uh, councilmember Farias. Actually, this is, okay. This is okay. Okay, guys, look right here. One more right here. Great.
I talk so much all the time. I pretend you guys are all my students, but that's good. And that will make me feel more complete. Um, I want to thank Senior Adams, Councilmember Harris, Janara, De La Rosa, and others who are here today. On behalf of Climate Jobs New York, the Harvard Green Open Schools campaign, we are so honored to receive this recognition. My name is Mary Babel. I've been a special education teacher for twenty-two years and I have a very proud childhood with the United Federation of Teachers. In District Seventy-Five, we work with medically frail students. I work with fourteen to twenty-one-year-olds. Many are very sensitive to air quality. It means it really said, you know, students that pass slight constantly. We are concerned that before air quality aggravates their mental conditions. I teach at seven-twenty-one Q of Queens now, but I used to teach in Brown for the working. At that school, we didn't even have a plan. It was unbearable, the heat. Students took their heads down, me as a teacher, now I'm telling them, I can't work, it's too hot. It made it very hard for the kids at those types. I've seen a lot of inequity in our schools. Unfortunately, that council now advocates for us staff and fighters to make our building safe and healthy as much as we can. I became a teacher because I wanted to help kids. After twenty-two years, I still get up every morning and look forward to seeing everyone in my case. And I come to the east of Manhattan, drive to the desert, sixty-six miles, and I love it. I know I contribute to this every day to all the staff and teachers in New York City. Climate change is causing extreme heat and wildfires. And it makes our air quality much worse. The carbon-free and healthy schools campaign, especially to get all public schools energy efficient. With the air quality, our air conditioning, and heating, I've spent solar on all of our schools. We also do our part to slow down climate change. If we invest now to put solar panels on the roofs of our schools right now, it will generate money to make all other improvements in our schools and reduce the inequities that I see, that we see. Thank you.
Thank you, Senior Adams, Councilmember Nurse, Philomena, La Rosa, Vidalis, Oridis, and all the council members here. We are honored to receive this proclamation and recognition. My name is Manny Ujescas. I'm a Dr. John Whitehead. I'm a proud member of the attached to all the local workers in New York City and union of over twenty-eight thousand members.
Global Green Lead Members is manager Chris Erickson. He's one of the unions involved with Climate Jobs New York and the Global Green and Healthy School Campaigns. We join with other unions to fight for good union jobs in offshore wind, solar, and other work to make our buildings and transportation systems energy efficient and not polluting. So we have a community that's free, has a water grid, and a health plan. I got a ten-year through construction skills, a program for high school students. I went to transit tech in East York. I saw a lot of in computer science, but actually developed the electrical theory and electrical insulation program. The rest is history. I went through a five-and-a-half-year apprenticeship program and I am now a former in Climate Jobs New York. One of the things best about being a union member is I can speak up and not worry about getting fired. It's very important so we can point out safety hazards so nobody gets hurt. My union, like many other unions, is doing a lot of seminars and trainings so that we are prepared to work on offshore wind, solar insulation, and other energy efficient products. It's urgent that we do our part to combat climate change. I want to make sure that my family, my future family, and everyone's family has a sustainable plan to live on with good jobs. Thank you.
Good evening. Are there nurses in the house? My name is Melena Panamorong. For thirty-two years, I have been a proud member of the New York State Nurses Association. I serve as board secretary and chair of our Climate and Environmental Justice Committee. I want to thank Speaker Adams and councilmembers Nurse De La Rosa and Janaro for honoring the work of Climate Jobs New York. I have been actively involved in climate and environmental justice issues since 2013, when I went to the Philippines, the country where I was born, and saw firsthand the destruction of typhus man, the one that the typhus man left behind. And as a nurse, it was easy for me to make the link between climate change and healthy health. And I knew Naisma had a big, important role in this fight. So, we are so proud of the work we have done with Climate Jobs New York. From advocating for offshore wind excavation to fighting for, uh, fighting for carbon-free and healthy schools, Climate Jobs New York has shown up. We are ready to continue to fight for our planet and our communities. Thank you so much for this recognition. We will use this to energize us as we move to the next chapter ahead. But we still have a lot to do. And we need to do this together because if we fight...
We win!
Because if we fight...
We win!
If we fight together, we win. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for that energy. One of the things about figuring out who to honor in the Climate Justice Services, there's just too many leaders here, right? So we tried to cheat by doing coalitions. But then y'all tried to cheat back by being like, we're gonna send them three or four people. We're all here at the same time. I want to recognize my colleagues that I was secretly forgot to mention because I was just like taking in all the energy and power in this room and y'all are just so amazing and humbling that sometimes I forget what I want to say. So, um, first of all, one of the things the council will bring is coming from the front. I think I have to come up also, councilwoman, to be the bomb this year. I wish I had the music and the force out there. I'll be calling for me here. Alright, so next up, I'm going to bring in one of my friends, a proud woman, Gwen. Councilwoman Alyssa Ovillis, who are from Sunset Park. Right, uh, Parsons Company. Councilwoman Milos Reza, who are Climate and Environmental Justice. She's been adamant, adamant about restricting last-minute warehouses, wrapping down iron trucks, protecting our whole side of communities, and specifically introducing legislation to stop idling and the pollution from cruise ships. I don't know what else I want to say. Chief Mike Tom, her mentor, residents, as the chair of council housing. Please be the one who will help me, the councilwoman.
Good evening, everyone. How are you doing today? I am so excited to be here. Um, so many friends here in this beautiful house. But it is my pleasure, my job today, is to introduce the first performer, Melvin Morales, from Enjuente. So, fundamental to a what that is grassroots inception is the principle of self-determination. This principle is what fueled the start of the organization in the early eighties. And it is this principle that continues to drive that only they work today, but many are hard work in this room. Enjuente strongly believes in honoring the deep intersections within the work, especially as it relates to addressing the climate crisis, which we can feel is very overwhelming. But it is the most pressing issue that we collectively face. As an organization rooted in environmental justice advocacy, Enjuente knows that the solutions must come from those at the center, most impacted, and that they continue to look at our leaders of today and tomorrow, the youth to lead the way. But I can't step away from this mic without acknowledging one of the co-founders of Enjuente, Luis Garden Acosta. The least good is who I work alone. His co-founders were Dr. Francis Cusenna and Gino Malgonado. And the daughter of Puerto Rico, Boriding, where we saw Hurricane Maria's refugees and a community who is deeply fighting against climate change and a government that is held bent to pay for fossil fuels and special interests. It's a special note. I'd love you all to shout "Presente", when I mention Luis Garden Acosta's name because we need to bring his spirit into the room. So if you would just indulge me. Luis Garden Acosta. We love that, thank you. So in that, I will pass it to Melvin Morales to share in his own words as he performs "Reo".
Hello, hello, everybody, come on in. So, I'm not gonna speak much, I'm gonna sit here, but I'm home. I'm gonna take a couple of breaths. And I invite you all to take a breath with me. To the top of my head. As a kid with asthma, I wondered why. These blue skies do not reward me. When small clouds do not get more me. And the East River is brown. I wondered why. I thought it shut down radio. Cut one off, and it grows two heads. Don't force to take cut costs instead of efficient ways to deliver the lead and the paper, now I must read. As we speak, we laugh and cheer, accepting all the people who live here. Doing the most, they use our fertile lands as a host for their direction posts, but this is our destination. As a kid with asthma, I forget to breathe. We live in a world rapping like breathing, I wonder why.
They're my history, but they're also councilmembers here as then councilwoman of the United States District, so just all having that year to last. And thank you all for being here too. All right, so we're beginning with a long, another break now. Another Bronx councilmember. A councilmember Amanda Baez, who represents District Eighteen, all the way in Newtown Bronx. Another break is the chair of the county development and the chair of the women's caucus. She passed legislation this year helping cities get reduced taxes for the fairing. Please welcome the councilwoman Amanda Baez.
Good evening, everyone. When I say public, you say power. Public?
Power!
Public?
Power!
Public?
Power!
Thank you all for taking that. I'm councilwoman Amanda Baez, and I proudly serve District Eighteen and the Newtown Bronx. And as a longtime partner, so just as I would myself, I'd be more excited to be in a community with you all tonight. I really also want to give a shout out to councilwoman Rose for the different element and really put this entire thing together. So often we don't get to get raises to one another, so I want to say so. Our next company is a growing grassroots movement of more than twenty different climate community advocacy organizations and thousands of volunteers who have taken actions from South Brooklyn to the North Bronx and all the way up to Buffalo. Since its launch in 2019, Public Power New York has worked in tandem with one another to channel their passion for a sustainable future into a truly meaningful change. Through their work, they continue to prove that when individuals and organizations unite behind a common goal, they can achieve extraordinary. It was in May of this year that Public Power's tireless efforts culminated into the passage of the Build Public Renewables Act. And we now get the credit of the council to unleash the full potential of public funding, ushering in an era of publicly-owned, hundred percent renewable energy. It isn't just about harnessing the power of nature, but about powering communities. It's about elevating the burden of rising energy costs for communities like mine, ensuring that air we breathe is so livable for our grandchildren and forging a new era of green convenient jobs and bolstering our great economy. It is clear that the coalition's victory reclaimed energy from corporate control has been firmly enhanced in New York. But the groundbreaking passage of the Build Public Renewables Act, Public Power New York has shown that the transition to clean, publicly-owned energy is not merely a dream, but an achievable reality. This victory is a testament of the power of grassroots movements and a beacon of hope for the more sustainable and equitable future that New Yorkers want and deserve. It is my honor tonight to conduct the operation of Public Power New York coming back to the next council. And I want to say...
Okay, look here, first, everybody, right here, take one more. Thank you so, so much. I would like to thank the council for this award and to everyone here to be recognized for all of the work that you do. And special thanks to councilmember Sandy Nurse, I'm always so proud of being here and the work of you. And I'm so grateful to be here with my friends and comrades, Kim Frazette, Sandy Nurse Project. I want to thank everyone who made this happen. It was an incredible, massive effort from organizations across the state, Mid Hudson Valley, USA, Sixth Street Community Center, Fort Water Watch, Vote Solar, Long Island DSA. I'm also a longtime member of the New York City Eco-Social Work Group, so shout out to my New York City DSA comrades and colleagues. The passage of the Build Public Renewables Act represents a turning point for our energy system. For decades, the United States has taken a fully free-market approach to the transition to renewable energy, which we said that's what we need in order to have a viable planet. But energy at its core is not a market commodity. It is a necessity, it has always existed outside the market, and it's shaped by the state. And the fossil fuel industry has been this very well. They have historically worked alongside the United States government to create and destroy entire countries in the name of their business model. But the people of New York know this too. And that's why we sell such incredible support across the state for this bill, to build publicly-owned renewable energy projects whenever the private market is falling short, and do so while lowering energy bills and providing the highest standard wages and labor provisions for the working people to build and maintain these projects. So now the bill has passed, the real work begins. Sorry. In January 2025, a board will be your power for the Public Safety Convention Plan, and we have until now to propose our own vision for how we're going to bring this law into reality. At its heart, this bill is about rebuilding the very idea of collectivity, that we can use the financial and political power of the state to serve the people. And for those of you in this room who are elected by the people, this is an essential part of your work, and we want to help you. We want to build projects that put your constituents to work, that rehabilitate damaged areas and lengthen your districts, and improve the people of your districts, the power of our offices, to change people's lives to the better. That's the real work, and we look forward to hearing you with him. Thank you.
Actually, it's tall, too. Good evening, everyone. I'm here in the house with We Act for Climate Justice, and it is such an honor to be here in a community with you all tonight amongst so many friends and colleagues I've known for quite some time in this space. And just the energy in this room with one single goal, moving us towards a better future, a more just future, a more equitable future for climate justice is incredible. So a big round of applause to you all. And I'm with We Act, an organization that has worked to build healthy communities for people of color and the vulnerable communities for over thirty-five years. And our communities in North Manhattan are overburdened with facilities saddled with unmanageable energy debt and on the front lines of the climate crisis. And so this win tonight of Public Power is transformational, a piece of legislation that sets a precedent for shifting the agency of energy access and affordability back into the hands of priority communities across New York and across the United States. Public Power provides us with accelerated timeline of peaker plant spays outs that have polluted our communities for far too long, and we could express with increased renewable energy resources from New York City, increasing our states and clients about historic climate law. And it of course provides middle discounts and takes one huge step toward non-incremental change in our climate progress. So We Act is proud to be part of this incredible effort, enabling true energy democracy a reality for all workers. I think this is really short, but for those of you who represent people in National Bridge territory, it's a very clear reason why we need to move to publicly-owned power because they just came out with a $4 billion capacity hike, and we're actively looking to shut that down because they cannot come up with energy. We need energy to be productive members of our society, saving the housing, transportation, medical care, education, all the things that everything needs to be right for. So yeah, let's get to it and keep working, shut down the COVID.
Another round of applause for Public Power New York. All right, so tonight, we are also going to be honoring what I consider a great institution. And I know if I tell it to you, you're gonna say the same. This is a person who needs very little introduction and gets praise pretty much everywhere. But tonight, the council is honoring Ryan Lear for using his beloved show and platform to engage New Yorkers on the climate crisis. One of the assumptions of climate week is that if people truly understood the gravity of the situation, they would act. An education and awareness is a ongoing effort that really requires all of us to find ways to tackle it and work with, like everyone, to understand the problem and take action. And this is absolutely not easy. Oil and gas companies and recent industries have spent billions of dollars covering the truth about climate change. They have an entire billionaire class that can throw money at messages and narratives that are just plain false. They spend millions painting us as the crazies who just need to get it out. In 2021, less than one percent, exactly 0.53% of all articles in a given month focused on climate change around the world, and within the United States, just a little bit over that 0.53 to 0.63%. It's alarming, and probably a good chunk of that is cited denial coverage. So as an avid listener of radio or news and storytelling, so of public good, it is a privilege to be sure you're between your per who has contributed to this most urgent cause. Morgan Queen, this figure has been passionate about radio since he was a kid, Brian Wobbe inside. He was a summer camp DJ with more study in music and acting patients at Synth Albany. Ryan Lear began hosting his show, the Brian Lear Show, in 1989 by dispossessing himself by engaging with listeners, taking lessons from real people from the good times. He has worked to monetize the airway and make radio more accessible. Every day, he nervous students his live power video program. It's all about working or listening to the podcast while commuting. We look to Brian Lear for helping us to understand complex issues. And after thirty-five years in school, the New York Times accurately declared Mr. Lear as equal parts city treasurer and useful therapist. This figure's client stories of belief have helped raise awareness about the full spectrum of environmental challenges facing our planet and the actions needed to mitigate their threats. Recent segments have covered the planetary problem of trash, climate friendly diets, storm surge prevention, climate change education, wildfires. Children's health, carbonized electricity, solar energy, and more. By keeping these critical topics at the forefront of public consciousness, he has not only educated listeners, but empowered many New Yorkers to take action. In this worsening media environment, QR starved for good through programming that tells us what's real and gives us the truth. Mr. Lear exemplifies the power and responsibility of the media to cover existential crisis and inspire residents to take action to awareness. He is a true champion for New York City, and it's my absolute pleasure to honor Ryan Lear on behalf of this figure in New York. And he still could not be here, but he did pre-record a message. He is very COVID-conscious, and you know, we are still at this, but he really wanted to be here, and so he recorded a message for us all.
Thank you very much for this honor and for caring about the climate, who is caring about human beings. I'm very sorry I can't be there in person. All this year on my show, we're doing a climate story of the week every Tuesday morning. As the show generally follows the news of the day, this week, so it's more formal. And here's why. The climate does not change at the speed of the news cycle. I'll say it again. The climate does not change at the speed of the news cycle. If city council passes a bill or the mayor announces a policy, that's obviously news. It happens in the moment and changes something right away. The climate, by contrast, changes ever so rapidly, and the glacial pace can literally end that term. Nobody's been reported on a newscast that the average global temperature was 11,000 degrees hotter today than it was yesterday. But keep that trend going a few decades, and it could dramatically transform lives on Earth. We could be like a severe drought, it gradually boils to death, and gradually warming power of water. A climate story of the week works against media bodies for things that change fast. The funny thing is though, this year has seen so many extreme weather events that have almost disproven that right. The Federal Government announced last week, have you heard this, that even though it's only September, the US has already set a new record for the number of weather or climate related events in one year that have cost $1 billion or more. They count twenty-three such incidents costing a total of $57 million and the deaths of 253 people. Each of those weather disasters obviously does make news, even by traditional standards, drawing attention to the problem. And one other thing before I go, covering the best response to climate change is rather than covering the fact that climate change exists. Government policies do create latest illusions and respond to who has the most power. So let's find balance for environmental justice, for longer gain and transitional gain when necessary. We see debate today over the base of law number 97, and so of all reasons, we need robust climate coverage. Now, if you get a chance to listen, we're doing climate segments every day this week as a member of the media consortium called Covering Climate Now. So thank you again for the honor. We pledge to Brian Lear Show or WNYC to try to contribute a good faith to the climate conversation.
Okay, I'm just taking a brief moment to acknowledge all the staff that were on the event. As councilwoman, we come to events and see you all all the time in the evening, for three staff members at the same floor right all the time. And when it comes to your sites, the whole fun is not usually us, we actually put things together. So I know I'm not like some flowers today, but let me tell you, the real grind of putting stuff like this together always falls on the staff, both the council, the council committee, so like Jackson and I have some other coworkers. All right, so then just trying to acknowledge councilwoman Jean Janara was also very important for being here. He was not feeling well, he was very, very excited to participate, as you know. Jean Janara was an OG to the council, was the council from 2002 to 2013, and is now back. Some of the offices and apartments that we've been having... back. Some of the offices and apartments that we even have in the city hall and under the theater are because of Jean Janara and his work. So please just give a round of applause for Councilmember Jean Janara. Alright, so we're gonna have another performance, another group. So mind your strength. Sorry I had to say it that way. That's just how it goes in New York City. It's my pleasure to introduce our second performer from the Bushwick Star. The Bushwick Star is a vocal organist, not the profit theater that presents the annual season of the New Performance Week. They are a organization comprised of their artists and their community and since 2007 have grown into a thriving theatrical venue, a vibrant network of arts center and destination for its sake and leading performance. The Star provides a script board for emerging professional artists to make career behind their roots. It is a sanctuary where established artists come to experiment and innovate. They are a labor of the playhouse, second Bushwick, Brooklyn's communities, diverse artistic communities, and many places. So please give a round of applause to Michelle Ross and Nina Holman.
This is my first time in the council chamber, so I'm honored. Hi, everyone. And then Councilmember Nurse with a warm introduction. My name is Michelle Ross. I'm the associate director of the Bushwick Star. It's a pleasure to be here today and share with you a bit about one of the most treasured programs we run at the Star, BGT, Big Green Theater. BGT is a eco-playwriting program for public elementary school students that uplifts the imaginations of young people to engage and create new plays performed by the impact of global warming. The curriculum is structured as a creative outlet for students to develop their own unique voices by learning the tools of playwriting, acting, songwriting, design, and critical thinking in parallel to the fundamentals of environmental justice. Led by brilliant co- or teaching artists, our students get to experience devising an entire production from inception to performance. Outside of the BGT classroom, students participate in community field trips to local organizations prioritizing environmental advocacy and work. These interactions deeply inspire our students' writing and provide us with personal connections to this social issue. BGT has grown to encompass a full school year through biannual curriculum programming, allowing four public elementary school classrooms in Bushwick and Ridgefield each year. The final productions they create are performed in their school auditorium for their fellow students, teachers, families, and their community. Today, I am pleased to welcome Nina, one of our current BGT teaching artists, to perform a song written by the students of PS84 from their production This Past Springs, "The World of Good and Bad: A Split Earth." As we navigate the challenges of climate change, creativity, both artistic and scientific, will be the key to unlocking a safer, more equitable, and sustainable future for all New Yorkers and the world. Funding arts education program is vital to this mission. Programs like BGT teach our students the value and urgent need for their voices and stories in this fight. Thank you again to councilmembers for the invitation today and for your continued support of the work of the Bushwick Star.
Hey, everybody. Before I get started, I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm Nina Holman. I am one of the teaching artists at BGT Theater. I do songwriting. Just to give you a little context of the song that I was singing, so this is a student-written production, as Michelle mentioned. And the plot of this specific play that PS84 wrote is it's a town that is split in half with a good side and a bad side. I mean, is it really good? Is it good? We'll find out. Basically, some members of the bad side start to do some recon and realize that the good side's mayor is actually corrupt and has been hoarding the resources. And so the bad side bravely tries to unite the community to create a better future. So this is the first song of the show. This sort of introduces both sides. Welcome to the bad side. It really isn't that nice. No colors in the sky. I think I might be blind. Take a look around. There is trash on the ground. Stormy with our mayor and she makes us want round. We are trapped. We've gone mad. We wanna say goodbye to the bad side. We are trapped. We've gone mad. We wanna say goodbye to the bad side. We are the good side. We don't want no trouble. We are happy here in our little bubble. The young is our mayor. He treats us really kind. He makes sure we recycle and stay in line. We don't litter. We're not meat. The flowers will make me stay clean. We don't litter. We're not meat. The flowers will make me stay clean. We are trapped. We've gone mad. We wanna say goodbye to the bad side. We're not litter. We're not meat. The flowers will make me stay clean. We don't litter. We're not meat. The flowers will make me stay clean.
Alright, thank you so much. So before I do the task that I'm about to do, I have to say that Councilmember Nurse isn't the only one to get writing right. Since I represent the Shreveats, I'm a part writer. I am the home to the most fabulous climate justice couple of this good deal here of, and other companies. They work as deep in the community and globally. And so I am so proud of all that they do and they have in my teachers. So yeah, I got some pride for this too. But in the vein of what I mentioned earlier about we starting a cause of self-determination, I just need to add one thing. We've talked about not only do our communities need to be centered, we talked about they need to be in decision-making roles about it. The one thing we didn't mention was we also need to own it. It needs to be community-owned. And I know other powers said that, but even more, our communities need to be controlling these resources. So I just wanted to live that out. And now I will get back on task before I get fired for my job. But I am so on to presenting to the next authority. And I just have to say, my relationship with this entity, with this incredible coalition precedes my 21 months as council member as I worked at a small social justice foundation where I had the honor to be introduced to so much environmental and climate justice organizers throughout New York City and many of the work of everyone in this room. I probably had the honor, the privilege to support in that role. And so in celebration of climate week in New York City, the New York City Council is so proud to honor New York Renews. In helping New Yorkers understand, navigate, and take action to combat the climate crisis. New York Renews, if you don't know, is a statewide coalition of more than 360 environmental justice, environmental justice, faith, labor, and community groups that fight for good jobs, climate justice, 100% clean and renewable energy, and worker protections. Born of necessity and fueled by passion, this coalition is a testament to the belief that a sustainable future is not a distant dream, but a fundamental New York right. New York Renews recognizes that climate change is a grave threat that disproportionately affects the most vulnerable moments. With unwavering resolve, it has demanded action from government leaders, reminded us that a healthy environment and prosperity should not be an exclusive privilege, but a shared destiny. And whereas New York Renews' climate protection is not a solitary endeavor, but a means to achieve environmental justice, empower local communities, and foster good jobs, there's hope that respect workers' rights to organize. For New York Renews, the transition to a clean economy can and must be inclusive. New York Renews was a major force behind the nation's most progressive and strongest climate bill, the New York State Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act. This groundbreaking legislation sets the stage for a fossil-free New York by 2050, commits to 100% zero emissions electricity by 2040, and mandates 40% of the state's climate and energy public benefit disproportionately benefits disproportionately disadvantaged communities. Building upon the success of the CCLPA, CLCPA, I always forget this one, New York Renews continues to advocate for a just transition in New York by funding community-led climate solutions, green jobs, supporting goals affected by the energy transition. New York Renews' strong coalition not only realizes the strongest climate justice policy in the country, but also serves as an inspiration for the vital Harris administration's justice forming initiatives. Recognizing that true climate justice cannot be achieved in environmental justice communities and workers are left behind, New York Renews has now advanced its cause, the climate, jobs, and justice package. The climate program aims to rapidly decarbonizing more, and make our state healthier, more equitable, and ensure a just transition for workers and help to create an accessible green economy for all. It provides a framework, I think it's really all, it's another one. It provides a critical framework for creating green new jobs and renewable energy, green manufacturing, new transportation, building, decarbonization, and beyond. New York Renews' commitment to fully implement the New York Climate Act will help slash the nonchalant coal movement that currently threatens the health of the communities and currently creating over 200,000 new jobs by 2030 by investing billions of dollars in renewable, solar, wind, and geothermal energy. So now, with that, let it be known that the New York City Council gratefully honors the New York Renews' coalition for its outstanding service and enduring contributions to New York State today and for the next seven generations to come.
I'm sorry, everybody. Let's all take a lot of steps back. You know, we all take like a lot of steps back, everybody. Everybody behind me is just feet stepping backwards. Sorry. Okay. Um, alright, let's give it a shot. Everybody look here. Yeah, that's the two. Someone on the nurse that can't see you.
So my name is Shifsovi. I am a certainly a member of New York Renews. I also serve at the executive director of TRG, which is a climate justice organization with over different kinds of college programs across the United States. So first, just to start out, I want to give a huge gratitude to Councilmember Adles, Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Nurse, Councilmember Delarosa was here, Councilmember Stevens, there was a ton of others here, as well as the staff of all the council members, so putting on this incredible event. I'm also currently on to join with Zander Kandler. I'm trying to describe the New York Renews is, and you got any clips, what I can be, so I just wanted to do a quick shout out. If you are over the New York Renews Coalition, I'd love if you could all take a stand for just a quick second. So the New York Renews Coalition began its efforts in 2014 when People's Climate March happened with over 300,000 people holding hands in streets of New York City.
Four.
Four times.
Do I go first?
Four hundred thousand people. Larger scale numbers, one of the largest marches we ever seen. And since that, we have been committed to making sure that action one day becomes action long term and policies that everybody feels in their lives and that our communities get those resources that are absolutely needed. The New York Renews Coalition led the passage with Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act, which as Councilmember Adles said, the most transformational piece of legislation that has passed in this country about climate justice. It's got a clear standard to what New York State needs to be doing when it comes to fighting the climate crisis, but actually codifying and making sure environmental justice is front and center of every action that New York State takes. And when we're talking about fighting the climate crisis, that is the most important part of policy practice, making sure that our most vulnerable communities have those resources. And New York State is committed to 40% of all of our mental actions taken to support our most vulnerable communities in the city and state. And New York Renews as a whole, that is an intergenerational, is a cross-sector coalition with over 370 organizations from the top to the bottom of the state of environmental justice, faith, labor, and youth organizations, all making sure that we're fighting towards one common goal of transforming this state and making it a better version of what we all know and care to be. So as the young person who's doing this work in climate, I know and I see it talking to students, talking to people that I work with, but our generation and everybody here is seeing impacts of what this crisis is and how it's impacting our city and our city. And to be really frank, it is quite scary. It is something that we have to confront every single day, rise in heat waves. We're looking at air quality crises. I have asthma. And just a few months ago, we saw one of the worst air quality crises we've seen in New York City. And I have to explain to students, like, what do we do when all of these things that are really terrifying are compelling and happening right now? What does the policy, what does this look like? And how do we actually make the world that we know can exist but isn't quite there yet? but isn't quite there yet? And that is scary, and I think that's worth saying. But I think simultaneously through Climate League, this is an audience here that is thinking about climate change, thinking about policies, and so how, thinking about, I understand the reality of the way that we're at. So I wanted to say something to also talk about what gives me hope. And I think for me, what gives me hope is working in the New York Renews Coalition, which I've been doing now for the last four or five years. And as young people, they have been doing a lot of amazing work across New York City, the United States, and across the world, fighting for climate justice. But the reality is that young people can't do this alone, and young people should not be doing this alone. And what the beauty of the New York Renews Coalition is that there are young people doing this work, but who else is on the table with us? Environmental justice, both labor, and labor, and so many other people, workers. Every person that needs to be part of policy making is here in the New York Renews Coalition, which is so incredible. And New York Renews is a national model of what other states and other people can do. It is an environmental justice model. And that is exactly what is going on. Seeing that, working in community, and being up in Albany with 400 people marching to the Capitol, people who are younger than me, people who are older than me, people that are doing this work for decades, that is what is going on. This is last year. Just this last year, we were building off of what the CCLPA is. And we were able to get some massive wins, as you heard a little bit earlier, with Public Power winning the Build Public Renewables Act as part of a bunch of Climate Jobs and Justice Package, as well as establishing a Climate Action Fund, which codified goal frame standards for any jobs that are created through climate programs in New York State. That is a huge win. And New York State is actually building and creating these, creating this world that we're seeing right now. The City Council passed the Zero Emissions Legislation Package, which is massive transformational for our city. But now, as we're all thinking about this, we're here for Climate League, and as we keep going through events, and Climate League blends, and we all have to continue living, a key question raised is how can we ensure that our city is not only ready for the impacts of our crisis, but how is New York City going to be resilient and also a better place than we have it right now? How can we make sure that my generation and the generations after me have a better and more beautiful, more sustainable, more just, and more equal New York City? That is the key question. And we know how we can do that. We have the policies, we have the tools, we have the funding, we know how we can do this. What's that going to do? That means passing the goal and integrating the Climate Jobs and Justice Package all the way to here. I feel for some of the working students across the city. That means we can ensure New York City and New York State invest in green, healthy schools so that every single student, regardless of race, regardless of zip code, have access to equal education in a building that is not actively marginalized. This also means protecting, implementing, and enforcing are what the most important municipal climate law that we have, Local Law 30. We need to make sure that law is fully implemented, fully enforced, and that there is no impact from whatever that may be. We need to make sure that that action is fair and adequate. We need to make sure that this law is fully implemented. So I am so grateful to be able to do this work for all of you. I'm so grateful for the New York Renews Coalition. And I'm so grateful to actually turn what we just talked about into policies that all of our communities will be able to deal with soon. These, everything that we pass impacts ourselves directly, dramatically, and quickly. So what we do as the City Council, as legislators, as organizers working here, have real direct impacts. And I'm just really excited to be able to build a better world with all of you. And we know how that is, so let's go ahead and do it. And we are a sample, another world is possible.
Alright, very wonderful, y'all. We're almost there. We're so excited, I want everyone with me. When we fight, we win. When we fight, we win. When we fight, we win. Alright, this is our last group of honor weeks, and I'm really excited to get to honor this. Jim was here, I really gonna be the one, but she's not going to forget. It's great, everything's my favorite. And try to keep one married. We need real things. So, New York City businesses depend upon hundreds of crashers companies with thousands of trucks. To pick up your waste recycling. With lower recycling rates, orphanages for workers, ungarced waste transfer stations, and lack of oversight, the industry was considered a type of wild west for ages. In addition to endangering workers and destroying the environment, they overburdened loans from communities and communities covered with loose infrastructure. Transforming Trash New York City is a coalition that has been transforming the commercial waste industry throughout the five boroughs to create good jobs and clean, healthy communities for all workers. Transforming Trash New York City's steering committee organizations include ALI, International Brotherhood of Teen Students, the New York City Environmental Justice Alliance, working together, this coalition is going the commercial waste industry into the 21st century so that our city will be more environmentally and economically sustainable and a much better place to work in with. Transforming Trash played an instrumental role in the City Council's passage of Local Law 199 of 2019, also known as Commercial Waste Zones. This important bill created a statewide commercial zone system and is going to help reform the private trash hauling industry, increasing the sector's transparency, accountability, and quality of service to small businesses. And this is and was a song. And we need all of you in this room to help us ensure this bill is implemented in a timely fashion and in a way that lives up to the values embedded in the laws. And we've got a lot of work to do on this. We're hosting a lot of hearings as chair of summation. We will be holding lots of younger congressmen, so like, so. But tonight, I'm honored to present this law coalition to Transforming Trash Coalition on behalf of the New York City Council, and I believe you're excited, because none of them is.
Let's all come on to this side. This side is better. And then, yeah, yeah. And if you think you can come around onto this side. Um, let's get closer together. Yeah. Uh, even closer together. Actually, if someone can go, like, if you can stand. And then, um. One more right here.
Before you start, I just want to have a personal privilege. In 1990, 91, in fact, the New York City Urban Justice Alliance was born. A number of us were fighting for city cops to be listening to ensure that underrepresented African-American, Latin, and Native that we were advocating for seats that were increased of representation. And in fact, I remember voting to lobby a Bush Justice Law in the early 1990s. And what's about African-American people here is, our wildest imagination is this one goal within the United States. So, I use my bill of rights that says there's no Democratic or Republican way to manage garbage. That's not true, but there's a racist way of managing garbage. There's an unjust way of managing garbage. Tell me what it is when the city generates something like 25, 26,000 tons per day, per day of waste. And that's handled, maybe 75% of that waste is handled in a handful of communities. It's handled in the North Brooklyn Bush Street, what they always think about Eastwood and South, Southeast Queens. You're talking about the same handful of communities that are hammered by thousands of trucks, in and out, these were the trucks. You're talking about the same communities that have some of the smallest, separate, ethnic races naturally in New York City in the world, in this city. And a lot of that is connected to the solid waste industry. In fact, the modern environmental justice movement, the first thing to moral fight that any of us people in Congress were fighting, it was on transport stations, and this one goes back 30 years. And we've had a lot of victories over the years. One of the things that struck us was that commercial waste, which was the bulk of it, was largely unrecycled. It was heavily being dumped by the city of New York. And about 10 years ago, at a conference, I started working with one of our partners, Eric Volzki, an actual resource specialist. Whether people may or may not think about big dreams, we should clone Eric and write a paper because this is the model of what a real ally looks like. So, I'll tell you what, 10 years ago, and are you seeing a lot of teen students at conferences? And we started talking about, we started talking about, and we gave finger lessons, just how much confidence the communities that fire your transport stations had in organizing and organizing labor. Anytime we go out, going to the morning, I'm looking, getting parked here, I said, we go out, you see the garbage trucks that are taking good looks hiding behind you of the box or the slots, like the Brown Brothers. And we're talking about like the Brown Brothers, or mostly unorganized, folks were taking some of those pages jumping on the city. That was the impact, and these guys, what they're still running down in these as well. So we realized that we needed to form this coalition of Transforming Trash. And it's in the history of the talk, we actually have that commercial waste zones, because we realized what sense does it make to have five, six, eight garbage trucks collecting garbage in the same way? Colluding not just our communities, but the entire city of New York. Now just increasing poll numbers, they're increasing green access stations. All of that could have been solved by one policy, and then it came to the commercial waste zones law. I won't go into a lot of detail about this. I will say one thing. A progressing pattern has emerged over the last couple of years. And no matter what visionary, progressive, perform policies we get passed in the City Council, we have to fight to make sure that it's implemented right. So people, we get the word pass, somebody's there, and that's just the beginning. Because we now have an administration that doesn't quite understand how to do this law or what it's serving, and how much of us. And that's all right, we'll show them how.
Thank you to our city council board of stars. Alright, so I just wanted to thank you so much for being anywhere tonight. You could be anywhere tonight. Climate League, there's so much going on, there's so many events tonight, there's so many conversations in town, they're all important, they're all exciting, they're all pretty vibrant and motivating. But we want to thank you for being here. To kind of start off with, I hope we enable events to continue to lift up the work of the climate justice movement, the environmental justice movement, the Grassroots Coalition, the neighborhood groups that are doing the long, hard work, and those who are also out on these streets doing that other work. I really want to thank you all who are on my heart. I want to give our speaker, Adrian Adams, for hosting this. I don't know if you noticed, I want to give a shout-out. They've got aluminum comforter. Everybody was happy. We got the boss car. Proud to find us, we're all for them, and we have us. We're sending them like a company, I'm sorry, we're shouting.
Teacher!
Okay, teacher! Thank you so much. We, as I said, this is the administration where so many mandates are due. And to be really, that will eat a fire. I mean, we spent, before we got here, we were getting a bunch of food. So our ratings are exploding right now. I'm not waiting for you to celebrate for this. We've got a long road ahead. And I just, I know that rating is real because everyone in this room is so strong and committed, dedicated, and talented, and so sharp. So sharp and smart, and super amazing and creative. And I just want to thank you all for being here, joining us. So, that is it. That's the end of the show. On your way out, hang on, we go until the council, the council man team takes us all out. But please grab some foods, and bananas, and beverages, and thank you all again for being here.